You're live, guys.
All right, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order the Jeffersonville City Common Council. It is October 19th, 2020, just after 7:00 p.m., and I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilperson White?
Present.
Councilperson Byrne?
Present.
Councilperson Harris?
Here.
Council Vice President Maples?
Here.
Councilperson Croft?
Here.
Councilperson Webb?
Present.
Council President Owen?
Here.
Councilperson Hawken?
Here.
Councilperson Ellis?
Here.
Let the record reflect all councilors present with Councilperson Croft and Council President Owen in the mayor's conference room.
Okay, Mr. Ellis, will you lead us in invocation?
Yes, I gladly will. My invocation for this evening is coming from a book of prayers by Betty Birch to let us follow what she says. "Perfect God, mighty God, everlasting God, thank you for thy sands that are planted everywhere. Prepare us to see and understand them. Thank you for your revelations, for they reveal to us thy wonders. Plant the seed of love and respect in every heart, so that peace may flow everywhere. Let thy power cleanse the world. Lead us to everlasting life with thee, in the name of Christ Jesus. Amen."
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. We have minutes to approve from the regular proceedings of October 5th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Maples and a second from Mr. Burns. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawken?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
And we have minutes from our special meeting on October the 8th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples, and a second, Mr. Croft. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Councilperson Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawken?
Aye.
Councilperson Allen?
Aye.
Nine zero.
Okay, we have approval of the agenda. The only change to the agenda I have, we need to, at the request of Mr. Merkley, table number 11.
A motion to approve the agenda, but in table number 11.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda with number 11 tabled.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Councilperson Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Council President, or Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Council President Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawken?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Nine zero.
All right, we have claims to be approved, civil city claims, in the amount of $646,000, eight, I'm sorry, $646,841.71.
Yes, I have no changes.
Ms. Metcalf? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples, second, Mr. Burns. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Council President Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawken?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Nine zero.
There are parks claimed in the amount of $159,379.11.
Yes, there are no changes.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Maples, second, Mr. Croft.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb? Council President Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawken?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Nine zero.
Thank you.
Right, report of the clerk? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to unfinished business. Heather Metcalf, 2020, OR 47, the appropriations and tax rates for 2021.
Yes, I made all the changes from the last meeting. And just wanted to mention also that the three funds that were increased, the general fund, the parks fund, and the edit fund, I wasn't aware that those funds were going to increase, so the advertisement didn't reflect that. So we'll just have to clean that up when the year comes next year. Because the DLGF will only allow a budget up to the amount that was advertised.
Any comments, questions? Or motion?
I'm making a motion to accept. Approved.
Motion by Mr. Croft is our second.
Sir?
Second by Mr. Hawken. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Can we have some discussion?
We can.
I just had a question for Heather.
Yes.
Um, so what does that mean in practicality?
The, if you adopt this budget as it is, it will go to the DLGF, and then they'll verify that the advertisement was not as high as what you were wanting on those three funds. So then the certified budget will be less than and bring it down to what it was actually advertised for. And then in January of next year, then we can do an additional appropriation to bring it back up to what you, your intentions are.
I see, I understand. Okay, that's, that's, that's all ahead.
So Councilperson White?
Aye.
Your vote, please. Councilperson Byrne?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Council President Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawken?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Nine zero.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Metcalf. Number 10, this is 2020 OR 50. Looks like we passed this on the first and second reading at our last, at our last regularly scheduled meeting. Do we have a representative to speak on the matter? Hearing none, Les, do you want to just give a recap? I assume nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed. It's just you're vacating a partial, partially vacating a right-of-way that's out around the Kroger development. The roadway is no longer needed as a result of the development. Board of Public Works, they recommended or signed off on the vacation, but ultimately it's the city council's decision, and we had a public hearing at the last meeting.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or a motion?
Motion to approve on the third trial. Unless you had a question, Bill, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was going to approve. Go ahead. I'll second it.
Motion, Mr. Maples, and a second, Mr. Burns. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawken?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Nine zero.
Okay, we've tabled number 11, so number 12, Heather Metcalf, 2020 OR 55, is an ordinance of additional appropriation. We will have a public hearing on this issue. This did pass on the first reading on October 5th.
Yes, I have no changes.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask if there were any comments submitted to the clerk's office.
No, there was no comments.
And I believe Mr. Reichel is downstairs in the conference room. Just want to confirm there's no one present to speak for or against. You're muted, sir.
That is correct.
There's no one present?
No.
On this issue?
No.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve 2020 OR 51.
And that's the second and third?
On the second and third reading, I'm sorry.
I believe it's 20 OR 55.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Yes.
And third reading on 50, 2020 OR 55, on the second and third reading. Second.
Motion, Mr. Webb, and a second by Mr. Harris. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Council President Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawken?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Nine zero.
Okay, we'll move on to Heather Metcalf, 2020 OR 56. This is the ordinance transferring within the same department.
Yes, I have no changes.
We passed this on the first reading at our October 5th meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve it, second and third.
Sir?
Motion, Mr. Maples, and I think I got Mr. Croft for the second. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawken?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Nine zero.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. Thank you. We have Chad Reichel, 2020 OR, I believe, 57. This is an ordinance repealing and replacing 14 OR 26, which regulated door-to-door solicitation and transient merchants.
Thank you. Thank you. Members of the council, before you, are revisions to the city's ordinance regarding door-to-door solicitation and transient merchants. This ordinance was known as 2014 OR 26. DAF is asking for the repeal of 2014 OR 26 in order to replace it with the language that's in front of you tonight. We are bringing this to you as our department has started to see a little bit of an uptick in the number of requests for food trucks operating in the city. With that, we are getting numerous complaints from those who register with us, and we're finding a significant number of operators who are simply refusing to comply with the ordinance. The primary issue that we have here in the city with the current ordinance is that it treats the hard-working folks who operate food trucks in the same way that it treats door-to-door solicitors. DAF feels that since food truck operators are working mostly in the public realm, they're generally in parking lots, and they're working at the permission of a private landowner, we feel that they should not need to be subjected to the same sort of onerous licensing fees and background checks that are necessary for door-to-door salesmen who are potentially going into people's homes. Just for example, Taqueria Dos Campadres, a food truck that's regularly operating in the AutoZone parking lot off 10th Street, just down the street from City Hall here, under our current regulations, the operations fees, required background checks, et cetera, for their operation, cost them about $1,300 a year. I think that all of us can agree that you have to sell a lot of tacos to make up that kind of money. On its face, I suppose you can think of that as the cost of doing business, but unfortunately, it's complicated by the lack of similar fees in our neighboring communities. Clarksville, for instance, has no rules whatsoever about food trucks. So when someone who can operate without any permits in Clarksville comes to Jeffersonville, finds out that they have to fork out $1,000 or more to run their business, they get a little perturbed, and a lot of them are just sort of going under the radar and hoping they don't get caught. So this kind of brings us to the ordinance that's in front of you tonight. The staff wanted to make sure that we're making it a little bit easier for food trucks to operate in our community. We believe that they're, they're, not a necessity, but they're certainly something that we're seeing more of, especially with COVID. The language before you tonight keeps all of the language from the door-to-door solicitor portion of this ordinance intact. There are a few strikeouts and additions to kind of clarify the language and remove a few redundancies in the ordinance, but basically, all the premises for door-to-door solicitors remains intact. What we have done instead is create a separate provision specific to transient merchants. These, of course, are food trucks, but they also include other folks who sell merchandise in a specific location, for example, selling Christmas trees in the Meyer parking lot. DAF toyed with the idea of getting rid of the permit for food trucks altogether, but really feels that a permitting system is still a good idea from the city's perspective. It allows us to see who they are, where they're working, and most of all, it gives us a chance to present them with the rules and regulations about where and how they can and can't operate in the city. The ordinance in front of you proposes a flat yearly fee of $75 for a permit to operate a food truck in the city. The permit for a one-time sales event, like the Christmas trees I mentioned before, would be $50, and no background checks would be required in either case. The ordinance goes on to clarify some of the language around public events. These are festivals, fairs, church picnics, et cetera, as well as private catered events where the licensing doesn't apply. It also cleans up and clarifies some of the additional rules for location and operation of transient merchants. DAF appreciates your attention to this matter. We hope that you will give it thought and approval. We feel these changes are strongly needed, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Chad, I know you and I discussed this, and I'm okay with your substantive changes that you're making, because obviously, food trucks were not really that prominent several years ago when those ordinance came about, the original one regarding the licensure requirement. My only concern is, is do you have any problem with just amending the current ordinance to reflect this as opposed to repealing, and here's why. I'm afraid if we repeal the existing ordinance and replace it with a new ordinance, then before the new ordinance can come into place, we've got to publish it in the legal publications and distribute accordingly to state law, because there's a penalty that's being imposed, where if we just amend the existing ordinance and we don't change any of the penalties, which we are not under your proposed changes, we don't have to go through that publication process, and that, and that delay and expense, that can get quite expensive in the legal publications.
That's fine. It's a very complicated revision. That's why I guess we suggested just...
I understand, and it makes perfect sense why you would want to just repeal it and replace it, but then, as I looked at it, I'm thinking, well, it's going to, it may be easier from a standpoint of going forward if we just have what you have here, instead of repealing, amending the current ordinance.
Unless, if I... Sorry.
Chad, I just had one question. I was reading over it, and maybe I missed it, or maybe it was the language I didn't understand, and it has nothing to do with the food trucks. It was door-to-door sales, potentially with juveniles and school events, fundraisers, and things like that. Is that touched in this ordinance where there, there's no need to require for them to register as a door-to-door salesman?
Correct. They have to be selling something for profit.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's an exception in there, and there are several exceptions. The my only recommendation would be if we just make this an ordinance amending 2014 OR 26, and we can clean the language up and come back on the next reading and present you all something that actually reflects that in writing, but...
Chad, another thing I'd like to bring, you said no background checks? Not for the food trucks. We would still require background checks for the door-to-door solicitors. Les, I mean, this might be a question with you. I mean, are we opening ourselves up for anything down the road if we're giving them permission to sell food, and if something occurred?
I mean, I think that was, I think that was in your own discretion, what you believe is a strong governmental interest. I mean, obviously, going door-to-door is, having individuals knock on doors in neighborhoods probably warrants a background check more than if we're actually having, having food trucks. I know this, this ordinance has went through, back when it originally started, we actually were challenged by the ACLU for certain provisions, and we worked out those issues, so I'm not concerned about that. You know, the other option is you could just do a separate ordinance just to address food trucks, but we just thought it would be simpler just to do it this way.
They still have to get their permits from the health department, so, I mean, that liability isn't on us.
Okay, I'm good with that.
They also can't, they also can't operate in the public realm. I can't operate in public right-of-ways or in public parks and things unless it's part of a special event, so they're really only operating on private property.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see where it'd be, why would it be a problem to have background checks?
It's just...
It's a good criminal. Criminal background on these people.
They don't do background checks at restaurants, too. When we go to a restaurant in downtown, Jeff, I guarantee you they're not doing background checks. What's, there's not much difference.
Yeah. I just got a bad taste for that. I think we need to have background checks for anybody that's catering to the public like that. You know, that kind of setting.
I would tend to agree with you on that, but also I would see the burden that we would add to, to the city, and when that service isn't, that usually has a background check being done, and they're not employed by us. I don't see that we would have any liability on, on any issues there. But I do agree somewhat with, with your idea.
I see. I just go back to the days when pedophiles were running ice cream trucks around this city. I haven't forgotten that.
How do we, does the ordinance do anything, Chad, to address or to allow for? I know since the, you know, pandemic shutdown, I've noticed a lot of neighborhoods are inviting food trucks into their neighborhood for, you know, a night. You know, they would have the taco truck come to Pebble Creek or what have you. Does, is there any, do we, is there any current restriction on anything like that? Or is there anything in this change that would address to allow for those types of things? Because I think that's been a great idea for, for the neighborhoods to, to get, you know, something different out while we've been kind of in this shutdown mode. You know, we're staying home, we're trying to distance, we're not going out. It's been really cool to watch different neighborhoods across the city invite that new element. I just wonder how that comes into compliance with what we, what we've got here.
So it is, it is written into this ordinance that the food truck is allowed at any, they aren't allowed to just park in a residential neighborhood, say, you know, on a Saturday in front of so-and-so's house. But if your neighborhood is having a special event of some sort, then that would be acceptable. Does that make sense? As long as it's, you know, legally sanctioned or, you know, special event.
But they could park in someone's driveway, correct, since it'd be private property under the permit?
Right.
Not, well, unless it's a specially sort of catered event, like if you were having a wedding or something, and you were specially catering it from a food truck, that would be acceptable for the, for the ordinance. But I think all of us can agree that you might not want someone parking in someone's front driveway in Oak Park, putting up a sign and letting just anyone sort of drive around and show up. But if that was a neighborhood event, that would be, you know, some kind of neighborhood, you know, night out, or, you know, an Oak Park meeting or something of some sort, you know, maybe that would be acceptable. You know what I mean?
Gotcha. The only thing I think, when we talk about reducing the fees and reducing the cost of business that you talked about, I'm not so much worried about addressing, you know, those costs of business when we have, you know, our brick-and-mortar restaurants are paying taxes on everything that they do. They have property taxes, they have rent. I mean, those are all things that, that somebody operating out of a mobile truck gets around, and that's something that we've talked about with some of the restaurant associations and some of the businesses that are in, Jeff, as to what the differences are and as to how, you know, a food truck, even like a food truck court would compete with, you know, private business with the additional, you know, brick-and-mortar business with the additional overhead that comes with that. Any thoughts there?
Um, it's kind of hard to say. I mean, we've even started to see, you know, a couple places like Parnell's, who are kind of, you know, they have a brick-and-mortar, and now they're asking about, you know, hey, can we get a permit for a food truck that we can take out to, say, River Ridge, something? So, you know, it's sort of working, I suppose, both ways. One could see food trucks, I suppose, as a threat to brick-and-mortar restaurants. It's also another way for folks to start, you know, be a little more entrepreneurial and start in the food truck, and eventually, you know, find their way into a brick-and-mortar establishment, once they have, you know, their branding and their food down and, and some clientele who's interested in what they do. So I think it kind of works both ways.
Any further questions or comments for Mr. Reichel?
I like the idea. I also like the idea of having a discussion, something to think about, should it pass tonight for the next meeting, why we wouldn't also allow them to park, set up in the public right-of-way.
Was there anything further?
Les, you want, with the, the motion, if we were going to pass it on the first, would it be a motion to amend twenty sixteen OR?
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to have a public hearing on this, correct?
I don't believe so. This is just, this is just a
amended it, no.
You know, it's just an ordinance. I mean, it doesn't require a public hearing, no.
I, I do have two people down here if they were, you know, who were willing to speak on the issue. We'd like to hear.
To answer your question, Scotty, no, it would just be, you know, on the first reading, an ordinance to amend two thousand fourteen OR twenty six, and then we'll come back and clean up the language for the next two readings.
Mr. Eichel, if you had someone that you wanted to, to bring with you to the table, I'd entertain that.
Okay. Yourself. Oh, just, just tell them who you are.
Okay, good afternoon. I am here with my dad. We are from Cacaría Nantes, we're on 10th Street. And we're here to tell you like a little bit how would this would help us with saving us more money. So after like everything that's going on right now, we've been keeping our same price. A lot of restaurants, I don't know if you have noticed, but their prices has gone up because the meat's going up, everything we need is going up. But for us, we kept the same price because we want to keep helping our community. And it would help us because we could help the community more because we, uh, police came to our food truck and they asked us if we could go so we could give them like some food to try. And if we had that money, we could buy more food so we could help out. Like the police or the school has called us to help out. And if we have that money, we could help the school out as well.
Go council members. Nathan Tadaro, somebody has known me for perfection years ago. I have a restaurant out in American Smokehouse Stadium out in the, down sixty two and just hired a food truck back in May. And obviously trying to get that going during COVID times has been difficult on its own when I spoke to Mr. Data back then and he told me about the fees that was required for a food truck. I was flabbergasted to at least because I thought about running a business, restaurants are known to have fairly high turnover rates. Though I would, I do have a food truck manager, but sometimes we have to run two people on the food truck. Also, I have a lead person, but when you add a second person, I go through six people in a year. I mean, I'm looking at three thousand dollars a year just to run that food truck. Which is just my opinion, just it's undoable. Cost wise, and so I think that would prevent me from really getting out into the community and offering these resources of food to people. As well as I wanted to mention the neighborhoods, I heard him speak about that, that I was, I was reached out to from neighborhood associations. And it was always a homeowners association that would reach out and they would talk to the neighbors and they would give me permission before I would come out. Offered any sort of clarity about what it meant that it was never just showing up and seeing what happened. Regulated as far as the neighborhood going and, you know, the neighbors seem to really appreciate that. So I'm here to speak on behalf of all food truck owners that the four hundred dollars a person was it would just be a huge cost for us to operate. So I ask the committee to consider helping us out a bit. In that it's already hard enough in this time and age of running a restaurant as it is. And so any help from the city would be much. Thank you.
Any other further questions?
Just, just a thought. I've seen this and I've heard of this in other cities and maybe even Louisville has this. Has there been any consideration that the food truck has to be so far away from a brick and mortar unless it's a city sanctioned event? A brick and mortar restaurant or?
Oh, I mean, we could, we could write that into the code. It's just sort of hard to sort of enforce, I suppose.
Right. It's not complicated, but you know, it gives them an insulator to other, other restaurants, maybe.
Yeah.
Their taxes and higher fees.
I think to the, to the right of way issue earlier, you know, it's sort of because, because they can't operate in parks and public right of ways, makes it really hard for them to operate in downtown. Where we do have a lot of the brick and mortar establishments. You know, it's hard to find a private property owner in downtown who has room to park an extra food truck. So that at least is some reason, I suppose, to keep the prohibition on running a food truck in the public right of way.
Chad, is there any differential between a, a food truck that has a brick and mortar place versus someone? What if I wanted to have Steve Webb's tacos and I decided to just get a taco truck? I mean, it applies to me if I want to start selling food versus if I don't have a restaurant anywhere else. I mean, the food truck's a food truck. Is that? Doesn't have, correct?
We're, yeah, we're not, we're not sort of discriminating versus, oh, you have a brick and mortar or, you know, you don't necessarily, you know.
So the, the food truck itself is not paying any property taxes or electric bill or sewer bill or anything else, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
I mean, certainly they have to collect sales tax, but.
Well, everybody does unless they go to jail. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? There are motion?
Scotty, did you make that motion to start with or did you just ask?
I just.
We haven't had a motion at all.
No, I haven't made a motion.
Motion to amend twenty fourteen OR twenty six on the first reading.
Sir.
Who made the motion?
Dustin.
Mr. Webb? And a second, Mr. Hawkins?
No, I didn't make a motion. I heard you mention my name.
It was Mr. White.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. White made the most, excuse me. Was that Mr. White? Was that on the first reading?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second for the first reading.
To declare the approval on the first reading to amend two thousand fourteen OR twenty six.
Correct.
You're a spokesperson.
Yes.
Counselperson White?
Aye.
Counselperson Byrne?
Aye.
Counselperson Harris?
Aye.
Counselperson Maples?
Aye.
Counselperson Cross?
No.
Counselperson Webb?
No.
Counselperson Owen?
No.
Counselperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis?
Aye.
Six to three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Next, we have Mr. Wilder, two thousand twenty OR fifty eight, which is an ordinance amending fifteen OR forty seven.
Correct. So I spoke briefly with Mr. Owen regarding this and I'm uncertain if the motion to amend an ordinance are in fact, if this is going to be an issue where you are going to potentially rescind or repeal the entire ordinance. So at this point, I would certainly be seeking some guidance from the majority of the board as to which direction this is going. And if it's be an amendment, then some guidance on whether it's an acceptable amendment language. If you're going to rescind it or repeal it, it's just a straight motion to rescind and a vote. Or motion to repeal.
Okay. What we're referencing, two thousand fifteen OR forty seven is the ordinance that sets out that we would have the four percent annual collection of the city's previous year's edit dollars going to the Public Arts Nonreverting Fund. The reason this came up was because in the budget, we made some cuts and adjustments to the nonreverting fund in public art. And it contradicted, excuse me, it contradicted this ordinance. So we asked to put this on the agenda for the council's consideration. Either we need to make a motion to repeal this or make a motion to amend this two thousand fifteen ordinance. If we're going to be in compliance with our own rules when we're considering the budget we've already passed.
And so everyone is aware, specifically, particularly the ordinance states, and Mr. Maples, this is one of your favorite sentences for anyone who, that the council hereby establishes a policy that the council shall allocate funding to the public art each calendar budget year in the amount of four percent of the annual collection. So your options, you can, again, repeal the entire ordinance. You can alter the language on the fund. Or you can tell me you want a whole entire ordinance addressing different issues, but those are your options. But at this juncture, yes, you shall allocate four percent of your annual edit money to this particular nonreverting fund.
And I did speak with Andy Crouch, who's his department oversees the public art division, if you will, from the city's standpoint. And, and we've had a good conversation about the fact that the city council had not intended to cut public art out of the budget entirely. However, we did want to, or we did discuss at least removing this very specific language that says we shall give a certain amount every year. And a lot of that has to do with what's coming down the pipe as far as income tax dollars and, and COVID. How that relates to the COVID shutdown from earlier in the year. So this the language that is as restrictive as it is in this ordinance is going, has the potential to adversely affect, you know, those funds even more so than what we, the adjustments we've already made.
Well, wouldn't, and the easiest way to go about doing this would just change shall to may. And then that way we can just decide, it still remains and it shows an intention without a commitment. And then that way we can kind of do what we want, which we can ultimately do anyway, but that kind of puts it in the right legal footing. Larry, would that be the easiest?
You're on mute, Larry.
May get, the word may give opportunity to do something or nothing, correct? And, and then you ask yourself, do you just want it to be that the council hereby establishes a policy, the council may allocate funding to the Public Arts Committee each calendar budget year, period? And not have any language that says in the amount of anything?
Or we could put up to four percent? So it could be anything four or below.
Up to, but no greater than?
Scott, I agree.
I think all of those are very.
Language. Yeah, but I also, we do state a lot in these meetings that we don't want to burden further councils with our, our ideas. And I like to stay true to that. I would, if I, if I was going to make the motion, which I'm not, I would just vote to rescind it. Because in essence, you could add four percent of the edit money that's coming in every year in the budget if you wanted to.
Mr. Maples, I would suggest that the language of this ordinance is actually exactly what you described. That it's two thousand fifteen has mandated that each council shall allocate funding of four percent of the edit. I mean, I think it was a mandate ordinance to begin.
Well, I would say we could move on with no action taken, but we've already passed the budget that is contrary to the, to the ordinance as it's written. So we will have to have a motion to make a change somehow.
Did the amendment to that white?
It's this, it is amending, as we found out when we discussed the food trucks, amending an ordinance is always the smoothest transition to maintain clarity of the ordinance with going through the new steps necessary if you just do something where you create a new ordinance.
Or just repeal it.
Or repealing it.
If we put may on there, then it is, then any council could decide each year in the budget. You know, how much they want to allocate to, but I, I believe we should not give up on the public arts continue to try to do what we can to fund it.
I, I don't, well, I can't speak for everybody. I don't think personally, we're not defunding the public art. We're just preparing for what could happen during COVID. And this was, this was a place where we saw a cut. And we're trying to bring this ordinance in line with what, what our budget reflects. So I don't think anybody's saying we're cutting out public art. At least I haven't heard that.
Yeah, I would not be in favor of defunding public art in its entirety. I think the city has greatly benefited from that program and, and what we've done through the Arts Commission.
I'll make a motion to rescind ordinance twenty fifteen OR forty seven.
A motion to rescind, is there a second?
I'll second.
Amended or rescinded? Or, or did you want to amend it or rescind it?
There was a motion to rescind.
The motion was rescind. Was that a second, Mr. Burns?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything further? Ms. Gill?
Counselperson White?
Aye.
Counselperson Byrne?
Aye.
Counselperson Harris?
No.
Counselperson, counsel by President Maples, sorry.
Aye.
Counselperson Cross?
Aye.
Counselperson Webb?
Aye.
Counselperson Owen?
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis?
No.
Seven to ten.
Okay.
And this.
Moving on, we have Heather Metzger. Sorry.
I was just asking Ms. Gill to just make a reflection in our line and, and all on our records that 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 his ordinance has been rescinded.
Thank you. Moving on, we have Heather Metcalf, 2020 OR 59, an ordinance of additional appropriation. Looks like this is out of the edit fund for park improvements, $170,000. Ms. Metcalf, and I see Mr. Northam also on. One of you would like to walk us through this?
Yeah, this was for the foam for the river stage.
Right. And I can speak on that. Good evening, council. If you remember back about seven or eight months ago, we came talking about the shape of the river stage and the need for repair replacement. At that time, we made the decision to purchase a foam flotation product that would be poured into the bottom of the river stage. That census happened, and everything is fine. But the money to pay for that was coming from an outside donation that after COVID hit, they pulled that donation, which left that $170,000 up for someone or somewhere to be paid for. The park's budget doesn't have it in there. And we don't have the ability to pay for that in the park's budget. So I'm asking for an additional appropriation to help out with this expense.
And just to, just to recap, this was, as Mr. Northam said, this was something that the council approved and kind of gave a little direction to on trying to preserve and lengthen the life of our, our river stage with the understanding that we would have some, a grant, you know, donation, if you will, come through to help with that expense. Unfortunately, that just didn't, that commitment wasn't able to follow through. Are there any questions for Mr. Northam? Will need a motion on the first and second reading?
Well, we made a commitment to do it. Not that we thought the funds were coming somewhere else, but we got to pay our bills, and it's already done. And they've already done all the work. Correct, Mr. Northam?
Yes, sir. That is correct. The work was finished back in April.
Well, it's not their fault that COVID came about. Our funds diminished from what we were expecting. Make a motion to approve on the first reading on 2020 OR 59.
And I'll make a second with a question, Paul. And all the work was done to your side, your and the inspector's satisfaction?
Definitely, yes. We took it on a test run in midsummer. We took it downstream back upstream for about an hour and a half. No problems at all.
Didn't you say it's almost like new, like extended to life like 10 years or something like that?
Yes, they couldn't exactly say 10 years. The guy said he didn't see any reason why we shouldn't get at least 10 years out of it. But that's exactly right. The foam is like having a new hull. When the hull deteriorates, the steel wastes away, the foam will take its place.
We have a motion for Mr. Webb and a second from Mr. Hawkins to approve on the first reading. Anything else? Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Parrish?
Aye.
Councilperson Abell?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
No.
Eight to one.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney comments? Mr. Wilder?
I have none. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Merkley?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. Department heads, we'll go to Mr. Reichel first, if he's still with us.
Hey, yes, I did have a question for council. So in 2004, council adopted a tree ordinance. This ordinance established a tree board, which oversee tree planting initiatives in Jeffersonville, and more importantly, in my opinion, set forth some rules and regulations for the planting of trees in cities' public right of way. Flash forward to 2012, in an act of some house cleaning, the council adopted an ordinance eliminating a number of boards that never materialized. So the tree board was one of these boards. And unfortunately, in the process of eliminating the tree board, they also eliminated the rules and regulations that we had set up for trees in the public right of way. So this has left Jeffersonville without any guidelines for tree planting in the right of way. These allow, these guidelines, if in place, would allow us to request a property owner to remove a newly planted tree if it was placed too close to a stop sign, for instance, or maybe under a streetlight. It would remind folks that we shouldn't be planting large maples underneath city power lines, or not city power lines, but public utilities. It would ensure that trees aren't planted in these little three-foot-wide curb strips that we have between many of our sidewalks and, and curbs. Once these trees get older, they start tending to rip up the sidewalk and the curb, causing us damage. We have no real rules or regulations to stop that from happening. Most importantly, however, I think these rules define the responsibilities of adjacent property owners to maintain the trees in the public right of way in front of their houses, in front of their businesses, et cetera. I get calls on this issue all the time. People don't want to trim up their tree that's blocking the sidewalk. They don't want to cut down the dead tree in front of their house or business. And they're complaining that it's the city's responsibility because this tree is technically on city property. A tree ordinance would define these responsibilities. So anyone who knows me, because I'm a huge advocate for trees, they do so much from our, for our community, from shading our sidewalks to cleaning our air, to helping us manage our stormwater, they improve our property values, et cetera. And it all really starts from getting that right tree in the right place. And I really feel that the city ought to have a tree ordinance that at least helps us get those trees in the right place if they are in the public right of way. So I just wanted to ask council if you would be interested in hearing and potentially adopting a new tree ordinance, since we had one in the past and it's been rescinded. And then I also wanted to ask if there was anyone personally who would like to not necessarily assist me in writing that, but at least sort of give it some eyes before I bring it to the council.
Chad, I'd be interested in taking a look at that. I think it's important that we have one. Now, we don't need a tree board to have a tree ordinance, though, right? I mean, we can have an ordinance. So yeah, if you, and anybody else can chime in as well. But that's something that I have a personal interest in as well. So I'd be more than happy to help out with that. And I would support some form of tree ordinance. I would say that most kind of conflicts between neighbors that I've tried to work out on the side without having to go to a legal, I get called on occasionally, have to do with the tree. So if we had something to kind of start from, a conversation to start from, that would be helpful. So you can put me down for a yes on that.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Thanks.
Thank you, Chad. Mr. Northam, did you have anything else to add?
I did. Thank you. So with the cancellation of the River Stage events for this season and a lot of our programs, we've come up with a program to have some concerts virtually on social media and Facebook. We had our first one last Wednesday. It was Thunderstruck, which was the ACDC cover band. It was very popular. We had over 2,300 people give it some views on Facebook. Our next one is this Wednesday. It's the very popular Juicebox Heroes. It starts at 8 o'clock on Facebook Live. So I'd just like to spread the word. And then next week, next Wednesday, we're doing it every Wednesday. But next Wednesday, we have 100% Polly. And the first Wednesday in November, we have The Crashers playing. So we're doing four of these virtual concerts. They're being played at the, the Maxwell House of Music. And we have four of our most popular bands playing. And if it continues to be popular, and we can afford to do, we might do a few more in November. Plus, we're also looking at doing a holiday version, holiday concert on virtually in December, in mid-December. So we'll have more information on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Ms. Metcalf, did you have anything to ask?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. And I think that's everybody we have on as far as department heads. We'll go to council comments. Mr. White?
No comment.
Mr. Burns?
No comment.
Mr. Parrish?
No comment.
Mr. Maple?
I've got two things. Just want to go over the, the decision to rescind the ordinance. We, you know, we already effectively slimmed that budget down for next year. So we had to do something. And the reason to rescind it versus amend is that any council in the future could effectively maneuver their budget to reflect a 4%. And, you know, the funds coming into edit to go into arts. So it's, I feel like it'd be binding other councils, which I've stated previously, and it, it stops over legislation. If you can already do it, I don't know why we need an ordinance to say we can do it. And then, secondly, I believe Bill Burns is a, the person he wanted to appoint to the Parks Board can no longer fulfill that obligation. I have someone interested to possibly replace him. Her name's Carmen Crudep. She's locally known here in the community, has some experience with grants and how government works. She works at Clark County Prosecutor's Office, sits on several other boards, Community Corrections Board. I think she'd be a real asset to the Arts Board. But if anyone has no problems with that, I would like to entertain adding her to the Parks Board.
Okay. So was that a motion, Mr. Maples?
That can't, that can't be. I just want to make sure if anybody else had someone in mind or wanted to ask me to wait so they could, you know, seek out another candidate or do some vetting. I have no problem with that. So if there is none, I would, I would like to make the motion. But I also want to give the other council members the time to find someone on their own if they, if they would like to.
Does anybody have an objection to entertaining Mr. Maple's motion?
If he has made the motion, I'll make a second.
I will make the motion.
Second.
And tell, tell us again, Mr. Maples, the name?
Carmen Crudep, and it's spelled C-R-O-U-D-E-P. And I can get all the information to Lisa the clerk tomorrow if that'll help things.
Okay. There's a motion, Mr. Maple, so a second, and Mr. Hawkins, to nominate for the Parks Board. And as soon as she's ready, is there any other discussion? I didn't hear any objection. We'll take a roll call.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Parrish?
Aye.
Councilperson Maple?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Nine zero.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Croft?
Yeah, only thing I got to say on this food truck situation, I don't have a problem with it. Just I do with the background. So I mean, you got somebody in a truck that can entice somebody into the back of it, maybe a kid. I know that might sound a little about, a little bit outlandish, but I've seen it happen. And it only takes once. That's all I got.
Okay. Mr. Webb?
I wasn't going to make a comment, but on the food trucks, since Scotty brought it up, the reason why I object it is, you know, you got businesses that are hurting, that are paying local taxes. They've invested in our community. And, you know, it's not right if I decided to take opportunity on COVID and start up Taco Steeves, you know? And there's a lot to be considered there, guys, because you see what some of these businesses have been taking a hit, paying taxes, employees barely surviving, taking their PPP money. And all of a sudden, I can go out to the auction, buy a $2,000 truck, ask a few mandates. I mean, if you do an ordinance, and all of a sudden, I'm selling tacos on the street. So that's why I went against it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hawkins?
I just wanted to mention real quick and kind of tag on what Scotty, Councilman Maples had to say on the art vote. And of course, we, everybody kind of wanted the same thing. But I wanted to, I would have preferred to have kept it and just changed it. And the reason for that is, I do understand, of course, that they effectively do the same thing. But the intent of that, and I think that's, I wasn't on that council that passed that ordinance and started that. That was well before my time. And it was just the intent to make sure that the arts is represented. So even though I did, I voted for it, I was in agreement because it was already a, it was already, the votes had already added up. But I do think that everybody on this council, our intent is to keep going with the arts. I don't think that that should be seen as a, we're going to get rid of it. It's just the conditions of the way things are today. I think it's important to kind of vocally say that a little bit to people who may be worried about the direction we're going in the arts. That's not what I perceive it to be. And I don't think it is anybody else on this council. And I didn't want it to, sometimes when you have ordinances that really don't do anything, you're just doing it for posturing positions. So I was okay with just getting rid of it altogether. But my intent is to keep, as much as the budget will allow, I think it's been a great asset to the city for those people who started the arts. That's it.
Mr. Ellis?
One thing that I have to say is, as usual, I am against additional appropriations. I think that when we let contracts for something, that we ought to be guaranteed as to where the money comes from, Paul. And we need to do something to make sure that we don't have to continue to come back to the till all the time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. I'll reflect or echo the comments made by Mr. Maples and Mr. Hawkins in regards to the art funding. No intention of seeing that program go away. Was on the council when we set aside that 4%, and I voted for it. I just think that, you know, looking, looking through a different lens now, seeing how the budget could be over the next couple of years, it's worth at least making some changes and not having that, that hard stick in the ordinance. When it comes to the food trucks, for a long time, I have been in favor of making food trucks more easily available to come to Jeff. Some of the language in, in the proposal, I really liked. Some of it, not so much. I do think that folks who operate a food truck still should be required to have the same kind of skin in the game when it comes to financial responsibility to, you know, the city. You know, paying those fees is just like paying, you know, property taxes. And that, that's only fair. You know, if, if someone can go to Clarksville and not have any type of regulation or fee they have to pay, but they still want to come to Jeffersonville, then that, that should tell us something. And we should welcome them, absolutely. But, but you still have to, you can't undercut your brick and mortar restaurateurs by allowing someone to bring a food truck at a much greater, you know, financial advantage. You know, maybe there is something, some sort of break that we should offer for the brick and mortars that are already in the city. If they want to put up a supplemental food truck to, to take out to the neighborhoods or to go to a festival, you know, that might be something to entertain. But I don't think that we should undercut our, our folks who have to entertain. But I don't think that we should undercut our, our folks who have put in the time and effort to, to have a brick and mortar restaurant in the city, who pay far more in taxes than the fees that were described earlier. The only other thing is with the passage of the budget, we'll need council members to actually come to City Hall to sign the budget. You will need to check if you voted yes or no, and then sign your name so that we can get that uploaded. If you could make arrangements to come into the clerk's office in the next week or so, that would be very much appreciated. Ms. Metcalf?
I'm sorry. Yeah, we need it in, within three days, I need to have it uploaded into Gateway. So by Wednesday would be fantastic.
Okay. So I was wrong on my next, in the week or so, preferably tomorrow or the next day. If you could get in here to sign that, that would be great.
And council president Owen, if I need to meet a council person anywhere on their lunch or whatever I need to do, someone gets it signed in the next three days, I'll have to do it.
And if you didn't hear, Ms. Gill offered to meet anybody out and about if they needed, you know, need to meet some, meet Ms. Gill to get that signature. She's happy to do that. Just be in contact and we'll get that taken care of. If there's nothing else, take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Burns, and a second by Mr. Croft. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Be safe, stay healthy.